How long do you want to be waiting on that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the flag of the state of New Mexico, the ideal symbol of perfect friendship among all in our county.
Let us power heads. Lord, we'd like to thank you for everybody that's here today, and we ask you to give us guidance as we consider the needs and the problems within our county. And we just ask that you give us the courage to do the right thing when we're needed. And we want to thank you for all the opportunities and all the good things that happen within our county. Thank you, Lord. Just so we ask the Lord's name, amen.
Amen. Okay. Public announcements. So we're transitioning into more normalcies. So the public comments this time are still submitted online. I have two. I hope that in the next meeting, perhaps the first meeting in July, we can be back to normal and have public, if they choose to come, speak for themselves. The first one was from Mr. Alvy Williams from our VFD. And his comment is, "As a longtime volunteer firefighter in Eddy County, I would support the upgrade to the radio system. Communications on an emergency scene is of the utmost importance. It can be life or death for some members of the public. I would also like to see a ban on fireworks this year as it is dry. Thank you." The other comment we have is, comes from the Eddy County Fair Board. It says, this is a letter that was submitted to Governor Grisham, and he asked if we could read it. It says, "Dear Governor Lujan Grisham, in line with public health orders issued from your office, New Mexico State University issued directives requiring university-associated activities will have no face-to-face activity until August 8th, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The directive encompasses all extension services, service activities, which includes 4-H. We are well into the season in which New Mexico youth manage livestock projects as well as indoor projects to be displayed and judged at county fairs across the state during the summer and ultimately the New Mexico State Fair in September. Extension services and county agents and FFA advisors play a critical role in assisting youth in almost every process of developing many livestock and indoor projects. Allowing youth an opportunity to raise healthy livestock and compete on a level playing field is inherently part of New Mexico families' role and urban. Families all across New Mexico come together and work toward their children's success at county fairs. Too many times, the collaborative effort of learning and bonding with the whole family goes underestimated. We believe you understand that importance. This process is a critical part of upbringing of many New Mexico youth and considered essential as a way of life. Many young exhibitors need assistance from the New Mexico State County Extension Agents and FFA Advisors to follow New Mexico Livestock Board guidelines for animal identification, health, and ownership. Extension agents' roles are important to feed, to the food chain process. They provide oversight and a source of information for feeding, treating, and raising the livestock projects our youth have already acquired. At the end of the season, these animals either, or animals enter the food chain. Extension agents and FFA advisors are crucial to helping ensure USDA guidelines are met. They are also important to the process of educating our youth in life skills and fostering activities that stimulate an interest in science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, or STEM, setting them on a career pathways leading into New Mexico's agriculture economy. We have the utmost faith in our Extension Agents, FFA Advisors, and the members of our fair association, as well as others across the state that have been, that have the interests of our youth in mind, using safest measures possible to protect their health while assessing, assisting in the healthy raising of livestock and development of indoor projects. Our youth operate as the smallest of New Mexico businesses when taking on livestock projects. They purchase young animals, buy feed and products from local retailers to raise the livestock and then sell them on the market through the fairs at which they exhibit their projects. Losing the opportunity to exhibit as well as time to work with their Extension Agents will kill their small business projects. Our children have already spent thousands of dollars and countless hours caring for and developing their livestock for exhibition at county fairs in our state, many with hopes of moving on to the state fair in the fall. As we prepare to enter another phase of reopening New Mexico, we believe Extension Agents and FFA Advisors can continue to safely serve their students, wearing protective gear and taking all CDC and state guidelines to safely continue livestock and fair projects. Furthermore, we truly believe county fairs could be safely operated throughout the season with guidelines in place so that our youth's business and livestock experiences may continue. As concerned citizens, parents, volunteers, and active community members, we implore you to consider allowing your, our youth access to the county fair experience. The Eddy County Fair is scheduled to begin July 20 and will end July 25. The Fair Board has canceled the annual carnival, the concerts, and associated dances as is actively following guidelines to protect the participants and public supporters. We want to ensure that our youth's work will not be in vain as livestock projects cannot be carried over to another year. We, the undersigned and attached supporters, ask that you modify the executive orders to this activity concurrently with our desire to protect participants and public supporters and allow Extension Agents and associated with NMSU the opportunity to ensure that youth projects will be judged under 4-H guidelines. Thousands of youth, their families, and livestock in New Mexico need this opportunity. We appreciate your support and look forward to working with you, with your team to a very successful 75th Annual Eddy County Fair. Sincerely, Eddy County Fair Association." Those are the only public comments that I have.
Okay. Okay, service awards. And so we're going to recognize the individuals within, with these service awards, but we're not going to do the presentation. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. BD Behringer, detention, 20 years. Roger Maxwell, detention, 20 years. Sal Ray Salcedo, detention, 20 years. Paul Gonzalez, Public Works Landfill, five years. Steven Gruke?
Grok.
Grok?
Grok.
He's German, I think.
Grok.
Grok. Okay, facilities, five years. Eric Moran, Sheriff's Department, five years. Joshua Rodriguez, Sheriff's Department, five years. Sheena Vasquez, facilities, five years. Okay, thank you. Okay. Roberta Smith, bid awards.
Morning, Roberta.
Good morning.
Morning, Jason.
Geez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Say good morning, Jason.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first bid we have here is for IFB 2003 for North 26th Street. It was solicited on May 22nd. We did receive three proposals, one from Constructors, Jane H. and Ramirez and Sons. The bid opening was held on June 11th, 2020, and it was determined that all bids were responsive and acceptable. So we do make the recommendation to award to Constructors who received the lowest bid at $982,365 excluding gross receipts tax.
Okay, questions? Okay, no questions. A motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the IFB 20-03 Eddy County North 26th Street Rotary Rehabilitation Project and award that to Constructors who were the lowest bidder.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second. Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Stane.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay. The second one, Roberta.
This one is for RFP 20-04 for landfill engineering services. This RFP was solicited on May 8th, 2020. We did receive four proposals, one from SMA, SCS Engineers, Wood, and from Park, Hill, Smith, and Cooper. We did evaluate all these proposals through a committee to ensure responsiveness and suitability, and it was determined and we make the recommendation to award to Wood Environmental.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Crockett? Mr. McCutcheon?
Is this, are you good with working with these guys at landfill?
Yes, sir.
Do you like?
Yes, we did, we did a comprehensive evaluation committee that did have an outside qualified party and was included with City of Carlsbad, was a part of our evaluation committee.
Perfect.
And we all came to the same conclusion. We are comfortable.
Commissioner Woods? Okay, so have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the RFP 20-04 landfill engineering service with the award to Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions, E.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Jason needs to go eat some Cheerios.
Yeah. Return his hearing aid.
We had coffee this morning. It was good.
It's a fasting day, or?
Wow!
Ooh. Just leave it go. Leave it go. Put the shovel down. Put the shovel down.
Okay. Public Hearing O-20-97 Amendment de earmarking the dedication of county local option gross receipts tax as provided in County Ordinance O-17-87. Do I have a vote or motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Bless you.
Okay. Deal is open. It says, identify the department presenter. So who is the department presenter?
There we go.
Morning, Wes.
Morning.
Okay, what is the purpose of the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the purpose of this ordinance was to generate funding for the indigent program that we have here, our department with the county. What we're asking is, is to amend this ordinance in order to redirect the funds. The funds currently go to our indigent department, and what we're asking is that we make the adjustment to the ordinance that would take those funds to the general fund, and then we would budget for the indigent and move the funding over as needed.
So the process is referred to as de earmarking the, the GRT associated with this ordinance. The state did this process in legislation in 2019. So this effort is to have our ordinance be consistent with the state statute, which de earmarked this particular GRT for indigent services. So in following this process, go through the public hearing, that allows us to make our ordinance consistent with state statutes.
Correct.
De earmark the, de earmark the particular GRT.
Okay, do I have any staff comments? Okay, do we have any public comments, limited to three minutes? Okay. Comments from the county attorney? That was adequately presented, and that is the purpose here. We're just trying to get this, get our ordinance to be consistent with what the state did back. It was effective July of 2019. Okay. Commissioner Crockett, do you have any comments?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Mr. Woods?
No.
Mr. Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, I have none. Entertaining a motion for the board to adopt the ordinance zero, I mean, O-20-97, amendment to de earmarking the dedication of county local option gross receipts tax as provided in Eddy County Ordinance O-17-87. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve said ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay. And so we're going to adjourn this hearing and move on to the next item. Public hearing.
Do a motion.
Oh.
Do adjourn.
Oh, okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
The public hearing.
The public hearing.
Second.
The public, okay.
Not the whole meeting?
Why not? They would have been really fast today.
We had a motion in a second. A second.
Call for the vote?
Aye, second.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. Now we're going to move on to number five, public hearing O-20-98, amendment de earmarking the dedication of county local option gross receipts tax as provided in Eddy County Ordinance O-93-21. Do I have a motion to open the special hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood. Crockett.
Yes.
Okay. Who is going to be the presenter? Wes.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, there were actually two ordinances, and this is the second one doing the exact same thing. I believe one of the ordinances was for 1/12th, and one of the ordinances was for 1/8th. And I don't know exactly which one's which, but this would do the exact same thing as, as what we did in the previous line item.
Okay.
This one is the 1/8th of 1%. The first one was the 1/12th, which was the Safety Net Care Pool Fund is what we were putting that in.
Okay. Can we get comments from the staff?
So again, this is a process to, to align our ordinances with state statutes, and we will continue to provide monies from the general fund for the safety net and indigent care. But it de earmarks those GRTs for those specific purposes and allows, allows the collection to be used in the general fund.
Okay. Any other comments from the staff? Okay, moving on to public comments, limited to three minutes. Any public comment? Okay, moving on. Comments from the county attorney?
No additional comments.
Okay. Moving on, comments from the Commissioners. Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir.
McCutcheon?
No.
Woods?
No.
Henry? Okay, moving on. I entertain a motion to, in a second, for the board to adopt ordinance O-20-98.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call, any comment? Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay, with approved. Okay, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing, O-20-98.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's move. Failing agenda. We need a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes for June the 2nd, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the June 2nd, 2020 commission minutes of a regular meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood. Crockett.
Yes.
Bless you.
Okay, we need to approve the expense approval report for May of 2020. Is there any questions on this?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the expense approv, the expense approval report for May 2020.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay. Purchase card approval list for May 2020. Any questions or comments?
No, sir.
No, sir.
No.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase card approval list for May 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase card approval list for May 2020?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay. Budget versus actual, May 2020, Roberta Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the budget versus actual for May, as you could see, we're quite a bit over on our total countywide revenue. We're at 119%. Obviously, mainly that's due to oil and gas production and equipment. We're currently over about 13 million total just with that. That doesn't include property taxes, which were over about 2 million, and then GRT, it's close to $5 million in GRT, so quite a bit more revenue than what we had budgeted for. And then the expense, of course, being in May, we should be about 92%. And overall countywide, we're about 66%. That's mainly due because your bigger funds had a lot less expenses. General fund is probably going to come in, probably $10 million under budget. You have your fire excise funds. The 60% fund in particular is going to have like $5 million due to the fact those projects are rolling over into next year, some trucks that are going in there. Your road fund is about 50% expended right now, so that's about $7 million. So a lot of your bigger funds, they just really came in under budget, or coming in under budget as of May. Could you?
We only have June left, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Comments?
Can you scroll up one more? Real quick?
Sure.
So for general fund, can you scroll up just a little bit more? Oh, stop, a little, right there. General fund revenue, they're at 127% collected. And again, that's mainly because of the same revenue sources I had just talked about. The expenses for general funds, I don't think there's a one department, except maybe insurance, that's over the 92%, but of course, we pay insurance at the beginning of the year. Could you scroll up just a little bit more? So for general fund, right now, we're at 81% expensed. I don't foresee obviously spending that extra 19%. We have one check run left for the year, so I think we'll come in probably around $10 million under budget on, on that, so.
Terrific.
For road fund, if you can scroll up, they're about 99% collected on revenue. On the expense side, they are about 48%, I believe, on the expense side. Stop right there. They're about 48% expensed. And really, a lot of that's due to just saving a lot of money. You know, Jason still was able to get a lot of the road projects done. I think the only one he's going to carry over into next year is North 26th Street, the one you guys just awarded. But really, it's just mainly due for a lot of saving in his department. In payroll, he had about $300,000 savings and another, his road construction, and another line items, he had quite a bit of savings in, so. So I'll stand for any questions?
No, sir.
No, I just appreciate the department so very much. It's really, really great to, especially now when things look a little tough, that we've been frugal the past year, so appreciate every department, everybody coming in with their budget and watching all the expenditures. So, so important to do, and we've improved that lately, so I just really do appreciate everybody, and thank you, Roberta, for keeping track.
Okay, Commissioner Woods?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Henry?
I've got a quick question. So even with Jason coming in under a little bit, would you say we've got maybe more production out of the department than we have in the past, with same monies, or? Because I know that's going to be a question from some people, is how, how are we under if our roads stink? But we've probably got more done this year, right?
Oh, definitely, yes.
Okay.
I think Jason's going to talk to you a little bit about the work that they've accomplished in this, in this past fiscal year. We have some of the road managers here to, to help share with that. So they'll give you a rundown of what they've accomplished, some of how they've accomplished it, and what the outlook is for the, for the coming fiscal year. If you remember, we did a lot of data gathering early in the fiscal year to try and help prioritize and focus that effort and activity. And I think Jason and his team are going to speak to that a little bit this morning.
Okay. I think it's great. Where are we at on our oil and gas? What's the revenue number?
Right now, total, we've collected about 22, oh, no. Oh, well, I already have June's number in my head, because we're at 33 million total.
33 million.
What was your number?
30.
That would be, that's including June's revenue.
Don't talk to him like that.
Now we're going to have to hear.
Yeah. Here we go. I mean, what I meant to say was.
Ms. Roberta, are you, were you going to correct your comment?
Okay.
It's, 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 you know, we joke a little bit. We are very fortunate and very blessed, given what's happened in the last 90 days and the changes in industry. One of the, I was doing a new hire orientation yesterday with our second batch. We'll now have all of the folks we've hired since the pandemic began through orientation. But in that particular group, there are three who were, have come out of the oilfield, who lost their jobs, are now going to be part of Warden Massagill's detention workforce. But, you know, those, those signs are there. So we had a surplus this year. Outlook is still uncertain, not as, not as uncertain as it was when we started our initial revenue projection for the next fiscal year. But it's still a, we're still an important part of what happens in New Mexico, Eddy County, in terms of revenue generation for the state and for the county, so. But it's good to have a little surplus.
Yes. And it's going to continue, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, after I saw June's oil and gas, I was a little bit more at ease, because that was for April's business activities. So that's the one we were really looking at, so. Wasn't as scary as I thought.
Okay.
Say a lot for the finance.
Do I have a, do I have a motion to approve the budget versus actual report for May 2020?
I make a motion to approve budget versus actual for May 2020?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Roberta.
Thanks, Ms. Roberta.
Request to approval to support City of Artesia and City of Carlsbad Independence Day Celebration, Alan Davis.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the Independence Day celebration, particularly the fireworks displays, were in question for a period of time earlier in the month. And at one point, some of the county commissioners were considering, is there something the county could do to help that? We subsequently reached out to both the City of Artesia and the City of Carlsbad, and they would welcome some support and participation. So I recommended that the county provide $15,000 per city to help support their Independence Day celebrations.
Questions?
No, I think it's a good idea. We should support it.
Absolutely. We're not canceling the Fourth of July.
Mr. Woods?
I don't have any comment, but I support it.
Honored sense clerk.
I tell you what, I was one of those commissioners that, that was reached out to, and I thought, I was born and raised in Carlsbad, 70 years as of May, and I don't remember ever. I tell you what, I was one of those commissioners that was reached out to, and I thought, I was born and raised in Carlsbad, 70 years as of May, and I don't remember ever having the Fourth of July canceled, maybe postponed because of weather, but never canceled, and I was really upset about the fact that that might happen. And so I think that I wasn't the only one. I know that I had a lot of support on the commissioner for the same thing, so I'm 100% for it. And having said that, I would entertain a motion to approve the support.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve supporting the cities of Artesia and Carlsbad in their Independence Day celebrations.
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
I still have some comments since we motioned.
Okay.
Is that okay if I?
Sure.
So I talked to the City of Carlsbad yesterday. Typically, they do 10-inch fireworks. Those are the big ones that you see typically, right? But this year, with Eddie County's support, they've been able to add 12-inch, and is it 8/16s? Is that what we have? 8, huh?
Yeah.
10/16s? So the biggest fireworks we have this year are 60% larger than the biggest fireworks we've ever had, so I just.
Only 10 more.
I just think that's great. I know that Josh has reached out and said that he's ready to get guys on the ground and help take care of all the fires that those, hopefully don't start, but if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, so we've got some big bombs going off, so anyways.
And one further thing, I would like to recognize our own Jason Burns. He is the one that brought the problem to me, and I want to tell you, he does a good job for us. So I do want to recognize.
He's a pyromaniac.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
We have a motion, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. The Board of Commissioners' direction to Planning and Development Committee for the repeal or replacement of the lodgers tax ordinance O-93-24, Jerry Fanning.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the 2020 legislature, as you know, passed a revised lodgers tax bill, and this bill actually will permit the municipalities and counties to collect taxes in reference to an ordinance that must be passed by the municipality to enact this. Pass the previous authorized 30 days that we normally collect lodgers tax from the first day that someone is in a temporary dwelling place through the first 30 days. So to do this, to start collecting those taxes beginning day 31, and the bill specifically allows for an ordinance which will designate how that money will be spent that's collected from the 31 days forward. And that's at the, that will be described in the ordinance, and it's at the discretion of the county. What I'm asking here to do is by, to form the new ordinance to allow the commission, or ask the commission, to refer this to the Planning and Development Committee for development of the ordinance.
Okay, questions?
I don't have a question. I just think that this is a normal progression of any ordinance, and I think it's a good idea. I know Wendy Austin at the city has all the groundwork laid, and it won't be hard for Wes and the Planning and Development Committee to figure out an ordinance based on the hard work that she's put in the last few months on this.
Okay, Commissioner McCutcheon.
No, sir.
Commissioner Woods?
No.
Commissioner Henry?
No, I don't have any big issues with it. I would say the one thing that I would say upfront for myself personally, I'm not speaking for anyone else here, but if they're looking to where these monies are going to go and how, I would caution that it better not be a reoccurring expense. So that would be the only caution I would put to that committee, that if we're going to make recommendations where the money will be spent, it can't go to something that's a reoccurring. For me, that I'm not speaking for the board.
Well, my whole deal about, about the lodgers tax, lodgers tax is to promote Eddie County. And when we don't use the full available funds to promote Eddie County, I think that we're falling down on the job, because that's what the money's for, and we should be out there promoting Eddie County to every place and everybody that'll listen to us. So I'm for all things that are going to increase the ability for us to do that. Okay. Do we, it doesn't look like we need a motion for this, so.
Yeah, I think it was just direction.
Just direction.
Take it to Planning and Development.
Okay. Request to open ordinance O-18-87, Eddie County manufactured home placement ordinance for revision, Stephen McCroskey.
Can we do that, since it says direction on here?
Yeah, it just says direction. Doesn't say, doesn't say a motion.
You can do the motion to direct them to develop the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, going back to item four, I will make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners direct the lodgers tax ordinance O-93-24 to the Planning and Development Committee for the repeal or replacement of such said ordinance.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay, moving back to number five. Request to open ordinance O-16-87, Eddie County manufactured home placement ordinance for revision, Stephen McCroskey.
Good morning.
Morning, Steve.
Morning, Stephen.
So I brought this before you. I spoke with Cass about this issue. What I would like for you all to do, if you would, is open this back up for revision. I don't believe it needs to go before the PND. All we're asking for is to basically remove the last four pages from the ordinance. It's the forms and the fees section. Typically, we, when we adopt an ordinance, we adopt those, or bring those in under resolution, so that they can more easily be modified when the need arises, rather than having to do what we're doing now and opening up an ordinance for revision. I'm not planning on making any changes to what's there, but we are transitioning the code enforcement plan, permitting planning software, to another company that you guys have previously approved. And in doing so, we're going to have to make changes to the forms, so they won't be what was adopted, and that's pretty much the gist of what I'm asking for. We will bring it back to you for public hearing and readoption after the 14-day period, or as soon thereafter as we can bring it back to you.
Okay, so basically, it's a revision of the forms, not a deletion.
Well, yeah, it's a revision of the ordinance in so much that we're removing the forms from the ordinance itself. We'll bring them back to you through resolution.
Okay.
So what we need to do is, you're going to develop or make the change to the existing ordinance to recommend what these changes are. At the next meeting, the commission needs to say, I want this put on for a public hearing to make these modifications or amendments that Steve has worked on, and then we do the same thing, gave it, put it in the paper. Got to be 14 days between the time the county commission recommends the passage, or wants it on the agenda for passage, and as long as that 14 days runs before the next hearing, then you'll vote on it that next, after that 14 days is passed at a commissioners meeting, same way we just did these two.
So you're going to open the ordinance, remove the forms, bring the ordinance back as revised.
And then we'll go ahead. We've got to have something to actually revise.
All we're doing today is just asking to open the ordinance.
Right.
Right. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, basically what this does is it makes it a lot easier, especially with fees. We want to keep, try to keep all of our fees in resolutions. That way, we don't have to have public hearings, and it saves the county a lot of money as far as advertising for these ordinances when there's any changes. So we want to move all of that out of our ordinances and into resolutions. That way, we can come directly to you and do it that day without having to advertise it for 14 days and that type of thing, so it just makes the process a lot easier and smoother.
Okay, questions?
I don't have any.
What do you plan on doing with the ordinance? Are you changing fees, or making the forms more complicated, less?
No, there are some changes to the form itself that will change, as for instance, the way it was adopted, adopted, the septic permit is asked twice, asked for twice on the checkoff list. But this also allows us to, if there's additional information that we want from individuals when they submit the application, we can go ahead and add that into the request on the application without having to bring it back to you guys.
Like what additional information?
There may be something additional we want as far as an electrical permit, or something like that, that we haven't asked for previously, or some indication as to where they're getting water, whether it's from a well, or municipal, or co-op water supply, something like that. You know, I'm kind of throwing those out there. We're not asking for those presently, but looking ahead to see what we might have to ask for.
Commissioner Woods? Commissioner Henry? For me, okay. I do entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request to open O-16-87, Eddie County manufactured home placement ordinance for revision.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay.
So Wes, we're going to get a revised, revisions that we want. We're going to bring it back to the commission, have the commissioners go ahead and vote to put it on an agenda with 14 days' notice for final passage. Okay.
Okay, approve safety net care pool certification of public funds for fiscal year 2019, 2020, fourth quarter, Veronica Pars.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So it's fourth quarter, needing approval for the certification, safety net care pool.
Okay, questions?
No, sir.
Questions?
No, sir.
Questions?
No.
No, sir. Okay, no questions, then I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the safety net care pool certification of public funds for fiscal year 2019, 2020, fourth quarter.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay.
We're just walking and rolling right along.
Approve, disapprove, one indigent burial, Veronica Pars.
And today, I am needing approval for Denton Funeral Home, one indigent burial.
Okay, any questions?
No, sir.
Questions? Question? No questions. We'll have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve one indigent burial in the amount of $600 for Dentonwood Funeral Home.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Resolution and agreement consent agenda. Do we have any items that we need to discuss or pull?
I don't have any.
No, sir.
No.
No, sir.
Okay, can I entertain a motion to approve this, then?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented, fully no items.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
You got to sign all those.
Chairman.
Look at all those.
I have the resolution and support for the livestock in New Mexico extension office, and we need all commissioners' signatures on that, please. We'll just pass it around. That's one of the 400 things you won't have to sign downstairs.
Okay.
Artesia when he's done.
Department updates.
There's another sheet. So I've been advised by the supervisor that there are three pages there that you have to sign.
Okay, didn't get that. Morning, Josh.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We will be assisting CFD on the Fourth with La Herta Volunteer Fire Department up north. I know most of the departments go and take their trucks, and kind of go stand by and help Artesia fire. The only thing I did want to bring up, and we're going to work with the, sorry, and also on our Facebook page, and then we'd ask you guys to help us spread the message. It is very dry. The last three years, I've had this position. I've never done a restriction. I saw the governor ask for us to do one. In my opinion, if she wants a restriction, she needs to lay one out there herself. So we're not going to restrict anything on burning or fireworks. We just ask people to be safe, clean a good 10 to 15-foot around their homes, trim their, you know, mow their weeds down. If they need any assistance with a controlled burn between now and then, if they'll call us, call out to the office, we will do everything we can to try to accommodate them. But we just want everybody to be safe, use common sense, and safe practices. If they have any questions, don't hesitate to give them my cell phone number. They can call me any time of the day, and we'll try to guide them in the right direction, so. We appreciate you guys passing the radio system. It's been a project for a long time, so we will get started, and I think the outcome will be very nice for the county in the long term. So to Commissioner McCutcheon's question of will you be back, not now, sir, because we just built in the SUA to be able to maintain that system for a long time, so.
Good, so, great.
I think we did a good job. Appreciate y'all. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Were you like talking about Jason Burns specifically when you said to be careful?
I'll go with him.
Yes.
Oh, gosh, that's even really scary. Morning, Carol.
I was just going to tell you a few updates about the IT, is that because of the COVID-19 pandemic, our computers, because of the supply chain, coming in a lot of parts from China, they are like coming in for like two months instead of like 10 days to two weeks. So that's part of our carryover into the budget, because we're not getting our computers and some of our large servers. Another thing is that our Windstream, one gig that we're trying, that you approved, and we're trying to get, the project manager told me that they're trying to lay fiber, and because of quarantined staff, it's taking longer to get that down, because they were locked down. Also, during the election, there were social media alerts they had to watch out for. We get some information from Department Homeland Security. There are, not only, I was surprised, not only attacks from Russia and China during these times, but from people who believe in Russia, right in the United States, like in Virginia, that are trying to attack all the internet places for elections. Also, in, after George Floyd's death, there was a tweet that said hack the police from, you know, a well-known hacker. And then we also have Mr. Davis trying to get people to buy gift cards again.
My written language is so eloquent when you read it, you know.
So that's all. Thank you.
Just for the record, if you receive an email that says from county manager Alan Davis, hey, could you go buy me some gift cards, please delete. Do not respond. I am not going to ask you to do that, ever, ever. Just sort of clear, ever.
We thought maybe he was trying to supplement your retirement.
Trying to supplement your retirement there.
If they were from PJMBs, it would be.
Yeah.
They don't give gift cards, I checked.
He's a rock star there.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we've talked about grant funding that we had received through the 2019 legislative session, and I just wanted to let you know that the $5 million LGRF grant. And I just wanted to let you know that the $5 million LGRF grant, uh, $4,750,000 was state-funded, $250,000 match. We did receive those funds. That's not a reimbursable type grant. We get to receive those funds upfront. We were real worried about it, um, getting, uh, taken away. So, we got that done and, um, a big thank you to Finance for getting our POs to us real quick so that we could get that, start expending those funds, um, so that we didn't get them taken away. But, um, I just wanted to let you know that we did receive them and we're moving forward with it.
Thanks, Wes.
Um, how are we doing on our bypass over here? I hadn't seen Jason with a blade out there yet.
Oh, on the west bypass?
Oh, on the east out here.
Oh, on the east?
If it come across, granted, just wondering.
Oh.
Commissioner, I'll speak with you after the meeting. Show you a proposal on what, uh...
Yeah, yeah, no, I, uh, did you have a blade in transport? I mean, could, you think we could have it done by, like, next week?
Maybe a dozer, too.
Yeah.
He's too busy playing with fire trucks.
Yeah, okay.
That, that proposal's about $9 million.
Okay.
To cross the, cross the creek.
You got $10 million records?
Sure, we'll see what happens.
Great for...
That sound like Santa Face. Not become them overnight.
Well, no, we could spend 18.
Yeah, that's true.
Thanks, Wes.
Thank you, Wes. Sorry.
You and I'll talk.
Oh, no, here comes Jason now.
Oh, no. So, Commissioner Chairman, Commissioners, um, what I wanted to bring to you today is a very comprehensive, um, this overview of what we've accomplished in the last year. When we first started this deal, we brought you several goals that, and I wanna tell you what we've accomplished. We have completed evaluation of all the county roads and we do have an engineering factor for the condition of them. We have completed road counts on the majority of our heavily used roads and we can now make, in, decisions and prioritizations on the roads based off condition and usage. We have completed a plan of attack on how we're going to improve the roads to get them back to a suitable condition that are, is safe and adequate to conduct business on and get from point A to point B. And we've implemented this plan. We're out there actually doing work and we're using, utilizing new initiatives and processes that have, to my understanding, have not been done at the county, at least if they have for not some time. And, and this is just within the road department. This isn't at the landfill. We'll bring back the landfill at a future date. Roberta reported this morning that we're under budget significantly. And this, as she's stated, this is not because we are not completing projects. We've completed more projects and more maintenance projects this year than the several previous years before. It's due to that we're eliminating unnecessary professional services and we're doing more construction work. We're getting out and actually putting the, the work on the ground. And this is heavily because of our road managers we have sitting back there that we've, um, how do I say? We've taken the leash off and let them run, let them go do what they know how to do. And they are outperforming themselves. They're doing a great job. And we expect more from them and they're gonna continue to run.
Stand up and recognize it.
We're gonna make them come talk here in a minute. Come, come sit up here. Yeah, come, come sit up here. The, the other thing that we've realized is that due to these two guys' efforts, we are able to provide a better quality product at a substantially reduced cost to the county for the products that we're getting. Some of them better than others, but the, the thing is, is these guys, when I go present them a challenge, they're not scared to go out and, and make it work for us. And that's the way the county of old used to be and that's what we're, our goal is to go back to, is that the county is self-performing the majority of our maintenance work and even to a point of our capital work. And that's what we're getting back to and we're realizing that. And that's why we're coming back with such under budget. And that's why we'll also be coming to you here at the first couple meetings and asking for some equipment to keep these guys going at the way they're going. So, um, essentially, our plan moving forward is to continue to expand the department as we requested, to hire the people that we need to continue to self-perform our work, to buy the equipment that we need to make sure that we're running and not spending more time fixing equipment and more time fixing roads. We're gonna continue our plan and our prioritization of roads and improvements. We're gonna continue to implement that throughout the year, even throughout this summer. Um, I think they showed me a minute ago that since June, or maybe halfway through May, we've already chips out, chip sealed in-house 20 miles of road. And we're, and the goal is to get to at least 40, if not 50, this year. We are, we've got this chip seal deal figured out. And then the other part of that is we're gonna implement a maintenance schedule. The, the goal behind keeping good roads is maintenanceing your good roads and keeping your good roads good, not going back and fixing bad roads. So if we can take our good road sections and keep them good, that's where we'll see long-term improvements. And that's what we've implemented with these and even the road projects that we've completed this year. We've already got them scheduled for maintenance projects even as early as June of next year. So, that's gonna be our goals moving forward. Again, I can't compliment and commend these guys enough for their hard work. They've worked beyond their hours. They worked on Saturdays, Sundays to make sure these roads. I mean, this is not a deal that, you know, it's Thursday, 5 o'clock, we're going home. They stay out there till the job's done. So, I can't talk enough about them, super proud, and I have looked forward to what they're gonna continue to do as we, as we let them, so. Is that quick enough? You guys got anything?
I just wanted to...
Not, not. There you go.
Um, I just wanted to add, out of those 20-plus miles of road that we chip sealed, uh, about six or seven miles of that was total reconstruction of roadways. That's Crossco and London. It was kind of a challenge for me. A lot of the employees have not been, um, on a project from start to finish, total reconstruction. So, uh, it was kind of a, a chance for me, Jason and Joe, uh, to teach the, uh, the employees of both departments. A lot of times we bring in Joe's employees to work with my employees, so we're kinda teaching them together, and get our lead men, um, kinda up to speed and that way they're outrunning projects. We're running the, the day-to-day in the office and making sure things run smoothly, so. Uh, I just wanted to add that. So, total reconstruction, if you guys haven't had a chance to, uh, drive those roads, check them out. Very, very nice.
And they're, they're great.
They're currently working on Bound Road, so if you wanna go see them work there, um, and each there...
That's a total reconstruction.
Yes, it is.
It needs it.
Stand for any questions.
Can you?
I just wanted to say something, uh...
Come on. Yeah, you do, just gotta get on the record.
I just wanna commend, uh, you know, both crews. I mean, like, uh, Nathan said, it's, uh, it's a challenge out there and we're pushing them to the limit. And they're willing to take that challenge. So the operators out there are, they're busting their butts. And the crews, you know, we, we, you know, they're, they're good. They're an awesome crews. Both crews are good. I mean, the, the process we're going in, we're going fast. I mean, he's, Jason's pushing us and we took the challenge and let's go. We're, we're ready to get these roads fixed, you know, get them ready to go, and so, and...
And as you can, as you can tell, we don't have a north department and a south department anymore. We have one road department and when Joe's guys need to come south and when the south guys need to go north, these two work together and communicate very well. And we take guys where they need to go. We don't have separate departments anymore, so.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Do you wanna, do you wanna share any numbers on savings on any projects, or you don't wanna do that?
I care if you want me to.
Sure.
Cause they're substantial, like...
They really are.
And you're gonna come ask for equipment?
I am.
And next, let me...
And I will bring some overall savings and as I understand it from Roberta, that with the road fund being what it is, is when we're under budget, that rolls back into the road fund and not necessarily back into the general fund so that essentially the money we're saving this fiscal year will roll into next fiscal year and I can come request it. Right?
Yes.
So, um... So such as a, a savings, the, the unit costs that we're seeing for chip sealing, through our current agreements, chip sealing is $4 and $5, $5.50 respectively from two separate, uh, vendors. Nathan and Joe are doing it for $2.25 a square yard, as opposed to $4.550.
Doing twice the amount, right?
Yes, sir.
That's it.
And we really do, and we're, and we're running down these things. Um, they're procuring the rock and they're procuring the oil and then they're going self-performing the work and it's coming in at that much of a cost savings. Uh, Nathan mentioned that he, uh, is completely reclaiming and processing, compacting the road, whereas that would cost us, uh, the $10, uh, square yard through a vendor. Nathan's doing it for 89 cents. I mean, it's, they're coming in very, very, uh, cost-effective to the county. And again, you know, like I stated earlier, normally, professional services are 10 to 15% of a project if they're fully engineered. We're realizing the cost savings on that by ultimately eliminating the majority of those professional services and going and putting material on the ground and trusting our operators that are, um, just as qualified to go grade and make these roads drain and do what they need to do. We do utilize the professional services when they're needed and when we do use them, it's at a reduced scope. The other savings that we're realizing is in employing our own construction inspectors. We have two full-time inspectors that are observing, um, all of the third-party projects that are doing daily reports and, um...
Smile.
I know.
You froze.
I did. Why can't you get me like you got Wes back there?
Just wait till we're...
We're fine.
All right.
Two inspectors.
So we have two inspectors that are employed full-time through the county, whereas a third party would charge upwards of $110, $120 an hour. I think our unit cost and, and loaded employee cost is 45. So, and that's full-time and we have them on, on staff all time. So, and we don't have to question, uh, what's getting reported, what's not, how they're reporting it, you know, cause they ride for, they ride for us, so. I can bring you more specifics at our next meeting if you'd like to see them. Come up and know and we'll, we'll sit down and go over all the numbers, so.
Great.
Thank you. Guys doing a great job.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make a comment. Jason, I just wanna say that it's very refreshing to see your growth over the last year. It's been just a refreshing change in our public works. And I wanna commend you guys on the camaraderie, just, um, it's very refreshing to see seven and a half years into being Commissioner. It's nice to see this change and appreciate it from all of you guys. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, any other departments? So these... Well, not a department, I'm gonna come up and give a short, cause I know that... I wanna, I know Commissioner Henry will probably have some interaction with what I have to talk about. We're probably gonna be full staff again, by the way, which is amazing, uh, even in the, the, the current climate that we're in. And, uh, we have enough applicants and I think we have enough quality applicants to fill all of our positions. Sadly, I think that, uh, Carol, we don't have a, an IT person yet, which is, which is, uh, gonna be a, apparently a struggle for us to find somebody. But I also wanted to pass around where, uh, this is something normally when a new sheriff comes in, like I did almost four years ago, they change a couple of things, badges, uniforms, uh, patches. Uh, that's our upgraded patches now. We're changing patches. We, I think there's been a lot of call for it from our folks. And, uh, we're, we wanted to put an American flag on our uniform because we didn't have one. And I did wanna put one below our patch because I think that's not respectful to the flag. Plus, if we had to remove a patch and put a, uh, an, an American flag on, that would require buying all new shirts. What we've done is we redesigned our patch. We have an American flag on the patch and there's two different ones so that the stars are always in the front, depending upon which site it's on. And they're a little bit larger than our old patch, so we're able to keep our, our uniforms that are still in serviceable and in good shape. Uh, we're just gonna have these patches sewn, uh, the other ones removed and these sewn on them. So, this is also coming into the new budget year where we're gonna be ordering new uniforms and replacement uniforms, so it's a perfect time to change over patches. So I hope everybody likes it. All of my folks like it. I think we're, uh, I think it's a more modern patch than we had and it, it, again, it, it, it displays the American flag, which is very important to us, so.
I like it.
With, uh, that being said, there's obviously a lot of bad news, too. Last night, um, our, our House of Representatives, after the Senate went home, so there was no chance of any deviation from the agendas that were set out because if they would've deviated at all, the, any bill that they changed would've died. And, um, sadly, we were, as a county, uh, we were strapped with an unfunded mandate. All counties were, all municipalities were. The good news that we have here is I saw, I, and, and Chief Griffith and I both, and ba, it was even with Sheriff London. I started back then working on getting cameras, body cams, cause I felt that they were very important. They're very expensive. So we've struggled with that. IT has, has struggled with supporting us on it because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big challenge to store that data. We currently store it for 60 days. This new law that goes into effect in 90 days says that we have to store it for 120 days. That's a long time and a lot of data, especially now. We, we, in our policy, we say that any citizen contacts have to be recorded. We've said that all along. This is nothing new for us. We, we, the, the, everybody's acting like this is some wonderful revelation that they had. Now, we, a lot of us, law enforcement, doing this for a long time. But we've done that and we, the supervisors all go in and cull stuff out because we can't save everything. We don't have the, the space to save it all. So, they go in and they call out what is, you know, not necessary to, to keep. If we get a complaint, we like to have the, that data there so that I can, I can review it, the chief can review it, supervisors can review it. It's very important to us, uh, to operate that way and to serve the public properly. But adding 120-day, um, that's, that's gonna be a challenge. That's gonna be expensive. So, these are some unbudgeted, there's gonna be some unbudgeted expenses that we will be coming back before you to say, we, this is what we ought to do. Uh, frankly, I don't know how Burnley County and San Juan County, being two of the biggest sheriff's offices in the, in the state, how they're gonna get this. They don't have them at all. How they're gonna get it done in 90 days, they're not. It's impossible. They can't even get the equipment in by then, much less build policy. So, we've got a big issue here with this, that throughout the state, that's gonna be a problem. If I'm, I know Carlsbad PD has them. I'm not, I'm not sure if Artesia, I don't think Artesia has them. Artesia's gonna struggle getting that done. That's gonna be a big burden on the city of Artesia. But anyway, the, there's also gonna be another, there, there's so much in that bill, in that law now, that is gonna be, have an impact on us. One of the things is presuming that we're guilty before we can be proven innocent if we have, if a, a deputy has a problem with a, a piece of equipment. Cause we all know that, that all this technology, it works all the time, right? No problems? So, um, if we have a technological failure, it's gonna be assumed that the deputy acted in bad faith. That's what the, that's what the statute says. I, I don't know. That's, I've never seen that in any law in America before, that you're assumed guilty before you've been proven guilty. So, anyhow, we have to deal with that. And one of the things that we're, I'm researching and I, I was, I have looked at it before, but I, and I don't know the numbers. It's gonna be another non-budgeted item that I'm probably gonna be coming before you with. It's, um, it's... It's, um, it's a tracking, um, program that I think we, we need as a county. We, well, we needed it before. I was, I was, I was doing a lot of research into it to see if it was really worthwhile. But with the, these updated things that are coming at us, with the, the political climate, the anti-police, anti-law enforcement climate that we have, we as a county, we, and I'm not just talking about as deputies, because the taxpayers are gonna foot the bill on all this, when the, the lawsuits come in and when we get attacked. That's, that's what's gonna happen. So, there's a, a tracking program that I'm, I think, I, I wanna make sure, I don't know the numbers yet on it, but I'm pretty sure I'm gonna wanna move forward on that. And it's, it's gonna be a, a protection device for us. It'll help you a lot when we, when we come up with any tort claims or anything, because we'll be able to draw a ton of data and provide UCAS with, with that stuff to help defend us and help defend the county. So, it's, there, there's some things that are gonna come up and I apologize, I do not like, you know that I don't like coming for stuff outside the budget, but I don't know that we're gonna have a choice with this. We're gonna have some things that we're gonna have to, have to do. This is, i- it's gonna be a burden and it's gonna open us up to a lot of liability. There's gonna, I, I foresee us, CAS is gonna need to clone himself because we're probably gonna have a lot more tort claims coming. Uh, all, everybody is in the state. So, I was very disappointed in how that went yesterday. I watched Commissioner Henry, uh, on Facebook yesterday and he's obviously very disappointed. Uh, there was no back and forth. There, well, there was some back and forth, but there was no consideration. Zero consideration for any, we're in agreement, obviously. We're in agreement. We think body cams are great. But there's a lot of stuff added in there that, that isn't great. So, that was my bad news. Uh, obviously, uh, obviously I made a trip to Washington DC and that was very good. I really appreciated, uh, the, the, the President spoke about things and obviously it's an executive order. It's, it doesn't hold the weight of law, but he talked about, we, we don't do strangle, we don't do chokeholds. We don't do that. We haven't done that for years. And, and maybe some agencies still do, I don't have any idea, but we don't teach them, we don't have them, we don't do that. So, just an update for y'all, so that you folks have some confidence that we are doing the right things. We are going through, we're in a process of a, a, uh, policy review right now, a formal one that we had already started. But, we're gonna pull our use of force policy and our camera policy and those, we're gonna push those to the front. We're gonna get those, make sure that we're gonna be in, in compliance with this new law as best we can and make sure that we're, 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 our best practices. We're gonna, if, if we don't have it spelled out that we don't use chokeholds, we're gonna spell it out. And we don't specifically spell it out. So, we're gonna do all that, helping CAS be able to protect us, uh, a- as a county, liability-wise and protecting the taxpayers' money. So, that's where we're at. But, I don't know. I think it's only gonna get worse. I think they're gonna, that we're gonna have some more issues. Uh, we've got the, uh, red flag law that's gone into effect. We haven't seen any effects from that yet. I don't know. So, we, we, and I, we, we, uh, do have some money coming in, grant money. Uh, we, we foresee some more grant money coming in, which is gonna, which is gonna help. The Law Enforcement Protection Fund, the, the, next year should be about doubling for us. That's gonna help mitigate some of these costs. Uh, we're going from probably about fifty thousand a year to about a hundred thousand a year with our Law Enforcement Protection Fund. And there's some other developing issues that may help us with Law Enforcement Protections Fund even more. So, with that, I would stand for any questions or input or discussion?
Any questions?
I don't have any.
No, sir.
I have a quick question. Speaker of the House E. Goff and his brilliance, at the end of that discussion and after they had already voted on it very pompously, because I think, uh, and I say his name wrong, but Representative Schmied stood, stood up and, and made a very good point that, let me back up, that's in the wrong order. E. Goff had said that in, in State Statute Section blah, blah, four dash, what, fourteen dash something, y'all are protected. I didn't quite, that's why I'm asking this question, because I didn't quite understand how y'all are protected under that. But then the representative stood up and said, "No, uh, genius, you're not, because we passed a prior bill, which is the red flag law, which takes that protection out." E. Goff never respoke on that because he was obviously incorrect and he has a hard time ever admitting that because he's so smart. And, and I'm very, very disappointed in him as a speaker. I've always been disappointed. This session was disgusting in the way he conducted himself. And that was one of the most disgusting, because he would not correct himself and I don't think y'all are protected. Can you help me understand and help the public understand how y'all aren't protected and exactly what was he talking about?
Well, and that's something that, that I really do, and I, we need to have a discussion with CAS and with New Mexico County attorneys, because we do need some legal opinions on this. Because I think that, and I can't remember her name, the bill sponsor who was talking, the girl and the, the lady in the white dress, uh, in the ponytail, she kept saying that we are protected, that there's a lot of misinformation out there, that we still have all the protections, but, and, and she also said that we can make our own policies locally. And it does say that you need to make, we need to make, but it's very specific and it says, "These are the policies that need to be made." So, she says, because it was brought up about undercover, uh, officers, it was made about informants. It was made, uh, the question was made about, uh, complaints from the public that they want to keep confidential, which is basically community policing, as, as Representative Schmiedy said, this is the death of community policing. Because if Commissioner McCutcheon has some bad neighbors that are maybe gang-bangers, he, he's, and not that he would ever be, but is, he's, he has a fear of them and he wants to, to speak to us confidentially and give us information on them, we have to turn our camera on.
It's a problem.
And that's a big problem, because who, who in their right mind, who has fear of retaliation is going to do that now? So, we've taken that away. However, they said that we can make our own polit, this, this woman, and I wish I could remember her name, said, "We can make our own policies governing that." But I don't see that in the law. So, I'm, I'm keeping a copy of what she said and I'm gonna craft, as she, she loved that word, "craft" also, I'm gonna craft my policies the way I wanna make them, the way I feel like, as she said I could. And then, when things go wrong, we're gonna get play on this and say, "This is what you said in the legislature." I don't know, maybe CAS and I need to talk about that. But, I make, I might ju-
You can't set policy that's outside-
I might just be being facetious here.
Yeah.
But, it's very irritating to me that we're gonna be stuck with that, because it says "all peace officers." Now, does that mean I need to be standing, sitting here with one on? I'm a peace officer. Certified, salaried, full-time peace officer, as it says. So, I don't know. And these are things that we're gonna have to get legal opinions on and we're gonna have to discuss. Now, when, when you're talking about us being protected, generally, and they spoke about this very distinctly and very eloquently, as Speaker E. Goff can be, and they talked about this and said, "Well, you are protected," because if, if, if a deputy, all that list of things that went wrong and one of them was, um, and the, the woman presenting it couldn't even pronounce the word "spoilation." She's, she was saying like "exfoliation," "spoilation." I, I, it was really weird to me. But, the new one is spoilation of evidence, either intentional or by negligence. That can be a tort claim also. So, if, if, that's what I'm, what we were talking about, is if your equipment fails or something comes unplugged, which happens, especially in a, in a physical altercation, something can come unplugged, something may not work, it may break, it may fall on the ground, you don't know, it's assumed that we did that on purpose. And so, we can have a tort claim filed on us for that. So, they, originally, the way everything worked was if a deputy did something wrong and it wasn't completely, there wasn't a, a, you know, some, some constitutional problem that occurred, they were protected. And even so, even if there was, they're still protected by the county. The county takes care, makes sure that they're, they're, uh, represented and then it, the county would pay any kind of damages. It's very rare to see a, a, an officer, a law enforcement officer have to, to, except for in Colorado now, where they have to pay five percent of whatever they decide to settle on, which is gonna be devastating. So, they were talking about that, but in, in the red flag law, you're absolutely right. Some of those, and they talked about that, that, that was one of the things we fought so hard against, some of those protections were stripped away. And that was specifically aimed at sheriffs, because we defied the almighties, where they, they are in the, in the, the Crystal Palace. So, that was, and they even admitted that, that that was designed to punish us sheriffs, that, that, all of us, except for a couple. So, there is a big problem there and we're gonna have to get, we're gonna have to get legal opinions on it. You know, CAS, I'm, I'm sure is already talking to New Mexico Counties and Steve Kolkman called me, uh, and just in a tizzy, he was like, "I, I don't, we, this is so bad. This is so bad." And, and mind you, Steve is a long-term Democrat, very liberal, very well-respected in Santa Fe, used to be, and he was against so much of this stuff and they wouldn't even listen to him. With all of his political capital that he's built up over the years, he was completely disregarded. So, this is a big, big issue and I, and, and we're gonna... Are, are my deputies gonna, everybody's saying, "Oh, law enforcement officers are gonna quit." Some may. I don't see my deputies doing it. We're, we're, and this is a testament to Eddie County and thank you to all of Eddie County and especially to the Commission. And, working with our, our county manager has been just such a pleasure, because he is so supportive of us. It's a good, it's a good environment here, but Santa Fe is trying to wreck that good environment for everybody. So, right now, we're, we're wel, well-respected here. It's gone back, all the way back to when, when Commissioner Wood was a deputy. I'm sure there was, there was great support back then. And it continues on now and I think it's even gotten stronger. But at some point, it's gonna have a, a huge impact on us. And I, I worry about that. I, I do. I worry about that. I mean, I've, I've got, hopefully, we think four more years left here as sheriff. And a lot of people have asked me, "Well, who's coming after you?" I don't know. I don't know, we're gonna find somebody strong, because we got, we have some very difficult times ahead.
And I don't mean to belabor this point, but this whole bill stunk. And I, the other question I have that I think affects us and affects legal as well, that was not cleared up, I think there was a good amendment to it that would have cleared it up, is the activation. Now, for us, I have no idea how y'all activate this and I think had the, the majority of the House actually asked the question, but they're so smart, they didn't think they needed to ask the question. I don't understand how an officer is to activate this and I know there's a lot of discussion around the second an event starts. And, and Tonya and I last night were discussing this as, well, there was a lot of discussion on this bill last night in my house. And, uh, I said, "I guess the way I'm looking at it is if, if an officer is sitting at Henry's and somebody comes in and there's a shooting or there's a robbery or there's something crazy that happens, if that officer has to seek," uh, and, and they use this example, he said, "If, if you've gotta find cover or something, before you find cover, because this incident has happened, your pin has to, or your little camera has to be turned on before you seek shelter or, or go to help assist or whatever this is." So, I guess my question is, is number one, how do you activate these? Is, is it, is it an easy process or is it, is it encumbrance? Is that the right word, encumbrance? That is, right? It's a good word.
It is a good word.
That's a big one, yeah. And, and to your other point, uh, if they, because she did make the point that the lady, you know, uh, they were talking about the Atlanta incident where the, the camera had ins, actually fallen off the officer and they were using camera from a retail store to, to show it. So, if it was to fall off or they hit it, I, I don't understand how these work. I guess I'm asking for clarification on, how do they work? How difficult is it? And every incident that happens, and, and like you said, she said "policy," but your policy can't go against the bill and the bill clearly says, "It has to be activated the second an incident starts." So, how does that, I guess, how does that work? How does that transpire? And I guess it's gonna be a question legal's gonna have to be very clear on, because you're right. They're guilty, which I think is pathetic.
It takes good faith out of everything.
The Democratic Party across the board, from top down, has taken, "You are guilty, everybody, and you prove your own innocence." I mean, we flipped that on the upside down and this bill does the same thing. So, how do we make sure our officers are protected in that incident? Because I would rather them go for cover if they're being shot at than activate a stupid camera to prove they're innocent and got shot at first. I mean, this is becoming absolutely ridiculous. But I'm curious how they work, because I don't think the public understands it. I don't understand it. And how are we gonna handle that little piece, which I think is a crucial piece in this bill?
They're, they're pretty simple. But still, if, they're, they're very simple. You press a button, they turn on. But, the, the problem with it is if you look at the dynamics of use of force, you look at what happens in a, in a, a stressful situation, what happens to folks. And I've studied this extensively, because I used to be a use of force instructor and a, and a defensive tactics instructor. And what happens is you lose things. You, your fight-or-flight mechanism kicks in. You're either gonna run or you're gonna fight. You're gonna stand and fight. And certain things happen. You get tunnel vision, you lose your, your, uh, you, you lose color vision, you end up with auditory exclusion, which means your ears shut off. So, that's why when, when law enforcement officers get a deposition and they've been in a shooting, they say, "Well, I just shot once." When they actually emptied their magazine, that's, that's human physiology. That's how you work. You, you, you forget things. Things don't seem right. You lose your manual dexterity. So, big, large, gross motor movements, like reloading a gun with a big, those work sometimes, but small things like right after you've been in a fight, you may not be able to unbutton your shirt or tie your shoe, because your fine motor skills are gone. They go away. When you get, when you get highly stressed, possibly scared, you lose those things. Anybody that's been in a fight here knows, ha, after you get done, your adrenaline comes down and you're shaken. You might cry even, when you're not sad, because certain things happen to you. So, in an instance like that, for someone in an ivory tower to sit there and say, "Well, you're gonna do this," when your life is in danger, is patently offensive to me, because those people have never set, stood in my shoes where I, where they've had to fight for their life. They've never done that. A couple of them had and there was even a, 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 a former police officer who was a Democrat who was saying, "There's a problem with this." I'm surprised they didn't execute him right there. So, it's a big problem. You brought up a very big problem, because things happen. In dynamic situations, bad things happen. Weird things happen. Stuff fails. I, I don't know. I don't know. So, I don't, and I guarantee you, I will never advocate, you know what? It'll just be a lawsuit we'll have to pay. Because I will never advocate and I will never train my deputies to put their lives in danger by, above all else, pressing a button. No. That's not, that's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. I, I mean, it, it's, if that's the law and I'm violating the law, well, I guess I'm violating the stinking law. But, my deputies' lives mean more to me than catering to, to this fantasy of, of, I don't know what.
Yeah, but I think my fear is not the money. My fear is that deputy, because that decision they make, if they don't, if they don't hit it right, if something happens, it's not the money. They're guilty.
Yeah.
We've seen how society has acted. They are guilty. And so, I'm really concerned about our officers doing their job properly, because ninety-nine point nine percent of officers do a great job and do it correct. Just like every other profession, there's, you've got the off, that, that just, they're off. So, my concern is, is, they go to jail, their family, I mean, that is my concern and I think this is a, I think this law has put law enforcement, "Why would you do it?" And I'm really concerned for y'all and we've gotta figure out how to-
I'm worried. I'm worried for our profession, I really am. I've got two boys, one has ten years to go, one has almost twenty years to go at Carlsbad Police Department. What do I tell them? You know, granted, one of the, one of them is- You know, granted, one of the, one of them is in administration, so he's kinda protected from it now. He's not on the street where he can be liable, but he has vicarious liability, just like I have, just like all of you have vicarious liability. It's, it's very frightening because I don't think there's been enough thought. We spent five days, five days, you have no five, right? Five days talking about this thing and then we rushed it through at the end. Because the Senate already gone home.
In seventy-two hours. And I think that was my-
People had marching orders.
We could've easily amended this bill and the Senate would've had to come back, understood for seventy-two hours. But it would've been a bill that would've fixed and actually would've perfect, protected law enfor- Like you said, this was a bill everybody was for, just not the way it was written. It was written very poorly and it was, it's putting a lot of people in danger and, including the county. So, I think we all need to read the bill, understand the bill because we, liability is on the county and the sheriffs and I think liability's on that officer and I think it's pathetic. Um, and-
If a deputy is fumbling for a button, when you, one of you is being threatened and they're fumbling for a button and not protecting you, not engaging, then, then it's definitely on you. It's definitely a, a problem for you. So, I think everyone needs to realize that this isn't just something that we have to do. This could cost one of you your life because we're busy trying to do some thing that the legislature said we have to do, instead of actually doing our job and making sure that, and providing protection and safety for you. And I, I'm very offended by that. As, as an elected official, that, and, and just as a human being, as a law enforcement officer, it pisses me off.
And I didn't mean to ask any questions, but I think this is one that, it, it, it's very, very concerning to the county. And I know a lot of citizens are concerned, so I'd like to understand how it works.
Anyway, I'm glad we got to discuss it in, in an open forum. I really am.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you all for your-
Okay. Before we move forward after this, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. So, you want Brian to go or you want-
I want him to wait. We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
A double fist and coffee and water, so I'm with y'all.